That word was used. Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of February 27, 2013. Tonight, we have Matilda Evangelista, Christopher Rich, myself, I'm Harry Locatilia. We have Howard Snyder and Wendy Beaumont taking the minutes. And without any further ado, we'll go right to approval of the minutes of February 13th. Yes, Mr. Rich?
I would approve, I would move that we approve the minutes of February 13th, 2013.
Chris moves to approve the February 13th, 2013.
Subject to corrections or iterations made.
And 13 minutes, subject to corrections. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Tilly. And discussion.
All can months have been received and they're presented in this.
They're represented in this?
Yeah.
Cool. And just, just for clarity, we're, we're only approving the public meeting.
Yes.
Right, correct. We're all clear on that? I didn't see that many errors that were really worried. I was too worried about. You good with them?
Yeah.
Tilly, you all right with them?
Yeah.
Chris, you all set with them?
I'm waiting for the vote.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Three to zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rich, move our agenda.
I move that we accept the vouchers listed in the agenda in the total of $2,279.37, all of which appear to be coming, or most of which appear to be coming out of Emmacount.
Okay, I'm just trying to pull forward till I find it. There it is.
It's $255 that...
$220, the amount, motion has been made to accept the vouchers in a total of $2,279.37. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tilly. Discussion. Looks like we have some BSCs, a Larry Graham.
The Larry Graham.
B.B. Mason, and it looks like you've put us all down for the Citizens Training Collaborative, $50 a pop there.
Right. And what's gonna happen is when we attend the conference, we'll get a receipt. And we submit that and they'll get a check. They understand that we don't have to have a check after we...
They know where to find it.
This just gets us ahead.
Any questions?
Any... They're just gonna, they're gonna give us a bill when we get there, or?
Well, we'll need to get an invoice or a bill in order to submit it to the town accountant anyhow.
They're gonna give that to us at the meeting?
Yes.
But we're registered.
Because you said receipt. Usually that indicates all of us is paying.
I, I registered.
Howard's gonna front it. Cash, right? Little joke there.
15% administrative fee if I have to carry.
Only 15%? I like that.
Any, any more discussion on the vouchers? Any more discussion on the vouchers? Any more discussion on the vouchers?
Yes, there is. They're both for, for Stone Row?
Which, which one you're in, the BSC group?
BSC.
No, BSC group, the 128 is for the Site Inspecting Engineers' Effort on Harmony Lane.
Oh.
The 928 is reading attendance for Stone Row, reviewing the ASBILs and so forth.
Oh. Stone Row is the...
Oh, ASBIL review, okay. It takes two...
And what was Larry's review for?
That is for...
Sixty.
I'm sorry?
96750, what was that one for, Howard?
Seven and a quarter hours to review the ASBILs.
I'm, I'm sorry?
For Stone Row. I'm reading the bill.
Oh, okay, we're still on Stone Row? Okay.
David Vager's bill is for Stone Row.
Mm-hmm, 928.
Reviewing ASBILs for seven and one quarter hours.
Okay.
That's a lot of time to look at plans for four house lots.
Larry Graham is Norina Way.
Let's, let's go one at a time. Let's stick to...
No, listen, listen carefully. David Vager, he's got $928, the BSC group, for seven and a quarter hours.
Right.
ASBIL plan review, ASBIL plan review.
Understood.
Up to February 1st, 2013, for ASBIL plan review. I just think that's a long time, isn't it?
It depends on how detailed he was looking at. Seven and a half hours is a day's work to look at a set of plans and...
He's got a, his memorandum is detailed, the hours.
Had to go over each and every bullet point, right?
Three pages.
That's, that's pretty much in the range that we usually see.
I would say majority of the root review is nearly complete. He's finding many of the comments made when the applicant was before the board have been addressed.
I, I didn't see anything outstanding. Did I miss it? Did I miss something outstanding?
By outstanding, I'll refer to items of suggestion, where he says it should be at the registry of deeds, things like that.
After, after actions, yeah. Yeah, just recommendations.
Not on the plan.
Yeah, but it has nothing to do with, you know, where certain points are on the plan. It's like, yeah, yeah, after action items, right? Tilly, are you good with that one?
I'm just laying some through all of it there, my goodness.
It must be. That's the one.
There's a lot of the bounds.
128? Yeah, it's $128.
26485 is BSC group for Harmony Lane.
I don't know if, if you think it might help, Howard, but putting something on here with the name of the project on that...
It's, it's on the invoice.
Yeah.
We're gonna be asked to sign this. You're asked to sign that to this number, and this is, this is a bill's payable form that goes through...
So you're saying you'd like to see the bill's payable reflect the project?
Yeah, just put the project name on it.
Well, he has a lot of suggestions in here. Is, is that, has, is that, does that need a vote from the board or approval of some kind? Like Harry is saying that it needs more gra, uh, grass. Could be considered, he wrote. The plan is acceptable, like he's, that's it.
Where are you?
I'm on, um...
Stone Row, right?
On number 14, and he's got a few others. This isn't, is this an old thing?
I think what you have is a compendium of three reviews there, and if you notice the font change?
Yeah.
The la, the last font change, I believe, is a bold italic.
Yeah.
And that is the most recent, um...
Action taken.
Action of the, of, of the board and of the review. So that you, you have the benefit of the full history of all of the reviews in that one document.
Okay.
And...
So in italics, I think, by what Harry's saying, italics is, this is an outstanding item. That was the first comment.
Mm-hmm.
And then the BSC review of February 1st, in bold, plan is acceptable.
Right.
So now it's closed down.
Right. And when reading through it, the other day that I read through it, I, I saw everything is closed. Sounds like those plans are, um...
So we're, we're done with this project, period?
The ASBILs are acceptable.
Wait, 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 wait.
Spot something?
What did I miss? I don't like the statement, as you may recall, based on the certificate of vote.
Where are you?
All bounds were waived for this project.
Where, where are you? I'm sorry?
On the second...
Page two of three.
V.
Yeah, V.
Yeah.
And I thought we came up with offsets for where the electrical box was, not complete wa, waving of it.
Yeah, we did.
Well, that's not what it says.
Right, he, he, um, the site inspecting engineer previously recommended approval. The BSC review of February 1st of 2013, the statement is acceptable. And then he states, Tim Rue's email states, this is, and, um, that this is installed as a stub granite post in concrete. This is acceptable. I believe that was the discussion at the board, where he couldn't bury it, but the board accepted it not being a full depth monument.
Where, where are you seeing that?
It's a...
The intersection is, I do not plan on setting a bound, and as you may recall, based on certificate, note that that's in quotations. That was Tim Rue's words. Tim Rue request of August 3rd.
You're reading the italicized, underlined text.
And, and that is corrected on the recorded plan?
The plan hasn't been received for recordation yet.
First of all, this is gonna go into our file, and unless that statement is challenged, that as you may recall, based on the certificate of vote, all bounds were waived, that's not, just not a true statement.
Where, where, where are you seeing that, Chris?
As you may recall...
Right, but, go, go back. That's a quotation. "Tim Rue request of August 3rd, 2012, quotes, this intersection is too close to electric box." And, and again, work your way down to the BSC of February 1st, and then work your way down further to the underline. The underline being the most recent and what was done.
Most recent action.
States that it's, it's installed as a stub granite post.
I see what you're saying. Yep, I see, correct.
And it, it is difficult, but it, it's probably the only real way to have, um, on a single sheet or a single report, the history of how each of the issues were resolved. And it is, it can be confusing. I, I just wanna call your attention to, you know, VII there, number seven there, plan is acceptable. As is everything. I, I didn't see anything that was unacceptable. That's how it said. It was just a few things that had to be done as far as moving forward and recording the plan. That's all I remember from it.
Do we get to look at the plan before it's recorded to see that all of this is in?
The site inspecting engineer, I'm sure, will send it along to us on a MyR, saying he's found it all acceptable, and we'll need to sign it.
All right, so we're waiting for that.
Yeah, it's an ASBIL. We just signed the ASBIL.
So...
So we'll definitely get it.
We'll get it, and then...
Sorry, and then it can be recorded.
Okay, so we'll have to review this when it comes in, I guess, right?
Sounds like a plan. Are we good with the Stone Row one? Does anybody wanna look at what Larry Graham said about, um, which one is that one? I'm sorry, which one was that one?
Norina Way, I think.
The Norina Way?
Larry Graham's invoice is for his work on Sixth Norina Way. I believe the report was previously distributed.
Mm-hmm, yep.
It's not included in your packet.
Are, are there any more reservations, or?
The WB Mason is for...
Is that the calculator?
Tilly's calculator.
That $5 calculator again? Spending all kinds of money. I hope it's solar powered, so we don't have to worry about buying batteries over and over again.
But with the high efficiency lights, you need to stand by the window.
Can I ask another question back here? Is there a time limit on us getting the final before they register it? Or could this be dangling for quite a while? If he doesn't file, if he doesn't bring that to us?
Can't do much without...
We don't know when it's coming.
Right.
And...
Let's see, a private road, not intended to be accepted by the town, hangs out there.
He, he, it works tight.
Sounds like Cedar Lane.
It, um... If you sign it, he's gotta record it within 20 days.
That's considered a requirement.
And then, once it's signed, I think what Tilly's saying is if we don't get it to sign.
And when the lot owners go to get mortgages, like he's got one, one undeveloped lot there, and, oh gee, a lawyer bought it.
Cash.
Oh, wow, and you're gonna need to sign off from the planning board to get the building permit for it. And then Howard would come across Howard's desk, and Howard would say, well, gee whiz, we don't have the ASBIL yet. Gino Riccadelli posted August 3rd.
What, you, you're talking about lot two?
The one as you're driving in.
That's a question of Commissioner Polley's lot.
But that lot is off of a private drive.
Kinda need a building permit, so...
Right, but how's the building permit relative to the ASBIL plan?
Oh, you think a bank is gonna finance it without an ASBIL?
No, I'm, I'm saying in terms of the...
I don't think so, so...
I don't know, I'm just wondering if there should be some kind of a time limit on these because we had so many, that we had to clean up from like 20 years ago.
I'm not disagreeing with you, Tilly. I'm just, you know...
Well, hopefully, the developer will move forward to it.
Honestly, you know...
Usually, the impetus is that the, the developer wants their Emmacount money's back.
Yeah, but if somebody came in and paid cash for it, didn't go to the bank, didn't have a mortgage...
Then what's he gonna do?
He'd go down and get a building permit and get it, right? The building inspector, would he catch anything? You'd have to sign off on it, right? The green sheet or...
There'd be a flag, though. There'd be a flag there.
So you'd have to look at that and then check the file. I'm just trying to get the process so that it runs smoothly.
Um, any more questions about the vouchers?
No.
Tilly?
No.
I'm gonna call the question. All in favor, Chris made a motion to accept the vouchers in a total of $2,279.37. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that an aye, Chris?
Yes.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, three to zero. Now, look at that, we got rid of two items on the agenda. And you wanna sign the signatures? What are there, one, two, three, four, five, five things we have to sign?
Yes.
Thank you. Five places to sign. Practice on your, your, what do you call it? Sir, what, what are you here for? Maybe we can modify our agenda a little bit.
The Ingraham, Laspena, and...
Any problem with taking that first?
Don't watch the weather.
Okay, we're gonna move right on to that. And this is, um, this is an A&R request? How are we identifying this?
Plan of land.
Plan of land.
Where are we looking here? You receive, uh, full-size hard copies, and I'll have it up on the screen.
Plan of land and...
What is the stamp?
What's the date in there?
What's all that stuff?
2012.
20...
13, excuse me, 2013.
And stamped by, do you discern who that is?
Alaric John.
Yeah, the date of the plan, though, is February 12th. But it was signed on the 20th, so you gotta use the 12th for the date of the plan.
Where, where are we looking here?
Up here?
Oh, February 12th. February 12th, 2013.
And is this your name, Williams?
Williams, yeah.
I didn't realize you were, I wish your last name was...
Howard, did this certificate of vote... A 13th for the date, or?
Is the certificate of vote in there?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, we haven't even talked about that yet.
It's ministerial. It was done as a motion last night. Just sign it.
Just sign it.
It was, don't you want a date? A word was signed in it.
It should, what does it say at the top, Chris?
February 13th.
That's when the board acted, so you can sign it today, that's...
Something else.
Oh, no problem.
Whole different something else. Mr. Williams, what do you have for us here this evening, please?
My client purchased the lot, um, the last lot on Blueberry Lane, Lot 5. And the lot originally was shaped like this. You can see the gray line that I've highlighted here, included on the plan 5A, Lot 5A and Lot B3. And so it was one lot that was 115,000 square feet. And the way that it's shaped and because of the wetlands, he was having to squish over the house, and he wanted to have a little more flexibility, be able to, um, put a different house in there than was originally planned, and have some backyard space. So he, um, made a, a deal with the Ingraham property to swap some land.
Oh, was this the 61A swap?
It was.
Okay.
It was. So, um, this Lot 5B, which is now gonna be part of, um, the lot on Blueberry, was 61A land. Went through the process with the selectman. They go to not, not, just said. And the net effect is that there'll be, um, like another 18,000 square feet that ends up with the Ingraham property, again in 61A.
Well, they'll be applying for it, right? Take a couple of years or something?
Yeah, I think that they're just gonna do it because, um, it's all in 61A now. This is all 61A.
Right.
And...
It's a tree farm, right?
That's, well, the tree farm ends like here. This is wooded.
Oh, okay. Silver culture.
What's that?
Silver culture.
Yeah, but the land, that's the land that's designated, I'm sure, is the tree farm.
What's the trees this, I mean, this is Christmas trees?
Yeah, you only have to, only a certain percentage of it has to be used, but you can have a larger area than what's actually used.
Right, but he, you know, he logs this, but this is the tree farm. So the net effect is that there's a little more that'll end up in the Ingraham piece, but this is a better shape to, to build there, so, um, this would be the new lot line as opposed to the...
Yeah, I don't think you can just say, okay, this is now 61.
Well, I'm sure there's a process there that, that...
There is a process. There were some taxes. There's some tax implication that is...
Last five years, taxes for the square footage that is being swapped over.
Yeah, it ended up being like $200 that, that they gotta pay.
$200?
Yeah, because it's only this.
Yeah, it's just tiny.
How many square?
Uh, 14,000 square feet.
Why was this planned like this?
14,000 square feet, $200.
What do you mean?
Five years taxes.
What was the purpose of changing the line? Because it was, it was more clear cut. Now you got like an angle. You know, you had a nice, almost square lot.
Yeah, it was square.
It was, and now you're, and now it isn't gonna be.
No, it's not gonna be square, but it's, it's a, um, desirable for this lot.
Does it have appropriate frontage on Blueberry Lane, which is now an accepted street?
It does, yeah.
So it has frontage?
It has frontage, it's got...
It has lot width, it has lot depth?
Lot width, lot depth, lot area.
Mm-hmm.
So we swapped off the wetlands for the drylands?
Actually...
What, do you need side setback?
Ingraham ended up with dry.
Oh, the wet.
This is, this is the wet area, right here.
So you need a side setback.
So the wetlands really stayed on Lot 5. They swapped dry for dry, but Ingraham ended up with more, more, you know, upland than he had before.
And essentially, he has now, he doesn't have to worry about the side lot setback.
And where is Ingraham's acreage gonna be?
Ingraham's fine, just the way down here.
So none of this is, none of that? Even, even when he does the square, there, it's a budding mainas property. How does Maina get there? They have their own driveway.
They get there from, from Bald Pate.
Bald Pate.
This Bald Pate's up here. Blueberry comes off of Bald Pate.
Yeah.
And underneath your paperwork there is where this part will have its...
Way down here.
Yep, the private way off of Nelson. It's a huge area. This is a very big area.
So what do they end up for total lot square footage?
On there, uh, 88, 89,000.
Okay, so they're well within the minimum lot requirement.
Right.
They're both existing, as they exist now, they're both buildable lots. And with the land swap, they'll remain both as buildable lots.
We're not creating any nonconformities?
No, they're not, because he, he's only got frontage in the RC, it's 200 feet. He's only got 159 on the private way, right?
This, this lot, B4, okay, B, when I say B4, not, not prior, B4.
Okay.
On the original plan, this was V1, okay? Not a buildable lot, because it is on the private way, um...
And you don't have frontage.
It was noted as not a buildable lot. We're not changing that. It's...
So he really can't develop this one?
It's still not a buildable lot.
It's still not a buildable lot.
I don't think, he's saying that it's a buildable lot.
Oh, I thought you did.
No, my question was that the one on Blueberry Lane is within the minimum...
Absolutely.
Right.
So there is no intention to pull a building permit here. It's only here.
Yeah.
And the swap was only to improve the shape of 5A.
All right.
And, yeah, it's not a better shape in terms of being square, but that's where Ingraham, Ingraham and him made the deal. Ingraham's happy, he's happy, so...
And the end result is that we have a lot that is conforming to zoning in the district.
That's right, and he, he's able to pull it away from the, from, from the wetland and be, you know, have a little more space, so it's probably better environmentally as well.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, Mr. Chairman.
If I may interrupt, Wendy, let the record show that, uh, Mr. Howard arrives at 7:35? Hi, Tim.
All right, hey, Tim.
One more minute?
Yeah.
We're just in time. Chris is ending up waters. Uh, you're in the midst of a, an A&R proposed endorsement here. It's a land swap that was done down off of Blueberry Lane, and, um...
Essentially, it seems like it's on all fours.
Were you involved in this land swap, or were you involved in the land swap?
I was on, I'm on the edge. I'm on the outside. I don't know what the...
That went before the selectmen?
This one? I drew the plan.
Okay, you drew the plan. That's all you did, was draw the plan.
I drew the plan. Derek Turney filed the application with, with the selectman.
You might wanna let the attorney know that in the law that he, he used, the procedure is that the planning board gets notified also? Which we were not. And I don't know if that's fatal?
The planning board did get a, a letter that we were notified. It's just that the, um, the, um, request went to the selectmen, um, in very, very short time, and there was not time for the board, I don't believe there was time for any board of the notified boards to get back to the selectmen before the action was actually taken.
It's all your fault.
Usually it is.
Always.
It's always your fault.
You want it to be your fault, we can blame you for it. Always you did your fault.
Blame the idiot.
They have broad shoulders for a reason. Um, are there any questions about this? Does anybody see anything wrong with this, or?
No.
Howard? I have no problem with it, Mr. Chairman. I would, I would move that we...
On all fours?
Yep.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to endorse the A&R plan.
So moved.
Chris makes the motion to endorse the A&R plan, and we're identifying it as Plan of Land Georgetown.
Date is...
February 12th.
Seconded.
Tim seconds the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
It's my decision to debate.
Ah, excellent. Something for the, uh...
The record?
For the, uh, for the file, yeah. Motion carries unanimously, four to zero. You have a MyR?
MyR's in here.
That thing?
You wanna bring them over?
Nah.
You guys are gonna walk them over?
It's easier, less noise.
Are you guys gonna do that later?
Or need to take it now?
You can pick it up in the office tomorrow if you want, but...
You wanna?
It usually has.
It's easy for you.
You need it tonight? What do you need? Talk to them.
It does not, you know what? I'd like to take it because I wanna make prints, um, for, for, um, she takes it to record. So she's gonna come here, when I say she, the attorney, she's gonna come here, do the paperwork with the clerk and the assessor, and go to record.
Okay.
So I'd like to make...
When she comes to do work with the clerk, have her bring two copies of the signed MyR, one for the planning office, one for the clerk.
Okay, so...
Two seventy-seven?
Correct.
And would you do me a favor, can I have a copy of the calculations on how they get about two hundred dollars for a quarter acre? Not that they smell rat though. Something wrong with that calculation.
Want to give that a quick signature so we can get rolling something?
These names on the back though, none of these have your name on it. The back of this.
I'm sorry, what are we looking for? Form A?
Endorsement of plan, believe not to require approval in the back. Those signatures of these, nothing is here is on his. On behalf of somebody, I could make out on behalf of somebody.
Twenty-five thousand dollars worth of tax rate.
On behalf of somebody.
Five to a hundred.
What does that about?
Well, that's the average.
Applicant's name, Mark Glassbina?
Glassbina, yeah.
That's the ones who own this?
But it's vacant, it's not buildable.
Okay.
No, 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 you can't, timeout. You cannot take non-buildable land, add it to a buildable lot and then call it non-buildable.
All right, I, I don't know. I had nothing to do with the calculation.
Screw my head right up through the ceiling on that, on that item. Non-buildable, you made, just made it buildable. And that's the whole idea of taking land out of sixty-one and the five year reversion of taxes.
So I don't, I don't know how the calculation was done at all that was done by the assessing department.
I'm sure it was correct if the assessors did it. You only need three.
Want me to take it with the.
You're saying you're sure it's correct if the assessor did it?
What is the five year?
The presumption is that it's correct.
When you take property out of sixty-one.
I'm sure it is.
You have to pay and you're putting it into anything other than sixty-one. They look back five years and you have to pay the taxes.
Back taxes.
The back taxes.
But only for five years?
For the, just the parcel that you're taking.
Anyway, what do I know?
So if you kept it in there for a hundred years, you'd still only be responsible to pay the taxes for the last five.
That's all.
That's why we want it.
Anyway, unless you're an owner, unless you're a. Child of the owner. There are exceptions. As a corporation, you have to be a stockholder.
We usually have that statement in here, don't we, that, that does not approve zoning requirements?
The blurb, the, yeah, it, it fits zoning, so it's not appropriate to put it on there. We usually just put that on there, Tilly, when.
Buyer of the property.
When the, when, well, the bottom line is, an applicant can choose to make a lot under A and R that does not conform to zoning. And when, when they choose to do something like that, then the board can ask to add that on as a caveat to anyone who may, may wish to purchase a lot.
It's always safe to put it on because you don't know when they start to break ground and what zoning is on the books then, you know.
They just lock the zoning down for seven years.
No, this is an A and R, this is a subdivision.
That doesn't lock it down?
There is some protections that it gives you, but it doesn't, it doesn't freeze zoning.
A and Rs don't freeze?
That's interesting because I thought.
That's so whacked.
No.
That's so whacked.
You have to do a subdivision.
Hmm.
Uh-huh. Possibly, I have to do it on my house.
Well, it fits zoning right now.
Maybe we should ask the board this because I think it should be on. I think it's a standard that we should have on every A and R.
But it's, we'll all look into it, but it's not required.
It's a little late now. Sorry, you want to run out with that?
By the state to do it.
It's something we can.
It's either, it's either five or ten years, but it's, well, at any rate.
Thank you.
Thank you for liking the show.
Uh, next A and R on the agenda, A and R for forty-one Jewett Street. And, do we have a plan for that one? Anybody here?
I'm throwing up there. No, um, everybody got a full-size copy. I don't have an electronic copy, except for an older one that's referenced.
Do you have that?
I'll tell you once the lot went over.
Are we going to have it when he asks to get one?
Why not?
He doesn't have to be here.
Everything that we need to see is here. It either meets and is endorseable or.
No, that's the long one, that's the one we did that.
Hey.
Let's try this one.
They don't have the mylar like we just saw.
Yeah, there's a mylar, okay.
There's a mylar over there?
Yeah, this is Mr. Morehouse's, so, property.
There you go, kid.
So what do we have to infer? What do you, what do you want to do?
Hmm, looks pretty easy to make. This lot, this lot right here is now these two lots.
This center line right here is what is being introduced to create the, the A and R. This house sits on this property. So we're bringing this line, and this would be the new lot created from the A and R.
Which, Howard, does, does lot one have adequate frontage, depth, width, et cetera?
It has adequate frontage.
Of all lot two.
How about the dimensions?
It's over two acres.
Oh, wow.
In terms of lot area and frontage, it meets the zoning requirements.
So current.
I'm not, sorry.
Currently lot one and two are one parcel.
Right. And when this was first submitted, I had told him that I wanted some clarification. And that clarification was the disposition of the Jewett Street right of way. And it's being shown as public. And so the next point to consider was the, it is a public way, does he have adequate access on and off of it? What you see there is existing edge of pavement. So I believe that he has adequate access, it is still paved. He has also introduced what's being referred to as reported old line of Jewett Street. So the stone, between the stone wall and the lot two property line is the old Jewett Street right of way width.
Wait a minute, timeout. Well, we're not changing anything out here, we're only changing.
Yeah, but the street is out here.
Jewett Street.
That, that is, that's Jewett Street.
Just because they label this public variable width, Jewett Street, how many Jewett Streets do we have in Georgetown?
We only got one.
You've got four.
What?
You've got two over by ninety-five, you've got one here, and you've got a smaller one here.
Welcome to Georgetown, check the GPS. Let the record show that the date on the plan is nine thirteen oh four. The surveyor, the professional land surveyor, Daniel O'Neil, has stamped the date.
As two. He signed it February fourth, twenty thirteen.
February fourth, that is, that is a four. February fourth, twenty thirteen. So it is stamped by a registered professional land surveyor. Okay?
So he is, the way this looks, he's not including this as part of this.
Correct.
No, those are separate lots, Tilly.
He's actually made, he's actually owns the lot next door to it too.
Yeah, he owns this one over here.
So this is always going to be a quarter of an acre?
It's almost a half an acre, isn't it?
Twenty-five something, I think I read. But Jewett Street is out here, it's not here.
Well, eight minutes out here, but that's still the old layout of Jewett.
There, there's, I haven't been able to locate any information of that old Jewett Street alignment, if we can refer to it as that, as being a tax lot.
I'm a little confused here. How does the Morehouse name appear on this land out here? If this was Jewett Street, did he own the other side of Jewett Street?
Mm-hmm, he bought it. Bought it from Bell?
No.
Doesn't answer my question. You're not answering my, that doesn't answer my question. Jewett Street was, the old Jewett Street's here.
Right.
So this stock line is his original lot.
Correct.
Now he's got this.
Right.
He had it before as well.
No, he just.
It's a deed at separate.
That's why I asked him, was, couldn't have had it before.
He didn't have it.
That's why I asked.
Well, they weren't a single lot.
Oh, no, 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 they weren't a single lot.
The deed says, I think.
But did he own it, own the other side of Jewett Street?
No.
Was there a copy of the deed in there, Tilly?
Yeah, there is, if I can find it.
The new Jewett Street alignment came through and that lot became bifurcated. That shaped lot, I believe that that lot was purchased by Morehouse. It became separated from its larger lot to the.
Perry used to own it.
Perry?
Perry, Charlie Perry, old Charlie Perry. If I can find it. Here, back here.
According to this, it's deed book one five five three four, page one eighty-six, and page one eighty-nine.
Twenty-six thousand five hundred square feet plus or minus.
What year did he buy that?
Nineteen ninety-nine.
So this is a registered lot that he cannot build on?
Correct.
Wha, what is?
Which lot?
What is the, the teardrop?
The teardrop shaped one.
One five five three four.
This one up here, which.
That's just what we're talking about.
Yeah.
That kind of takes away the frontage though, unless you consider the old Jewett's.
But it's, it's a deed, it's a separated lot. His frontage is still on Jewett Street, but we'll refer to it as the old Jewett Street alignment. It's the same conundrum as Hazen Court and Rogers Lane.
I know, so we're going to be running.
When the old, when the new, when the county layout happened and the new Jewett Street alignment went through. I, in my search, and I haven't been provided any documentation, showed the old alignment was given up by the county to a private person who was given to the town. So it's still a public right of way. You can drive, park on it.
Is it being used?
I would, I would, the way I see it, he would have to, Morehouse would have to give him.
It's not being used.
That piece of land in front of it too, because the new Jewett Street is what, where the frontage would be. You can't, it's not fronted if it's not.
That's how I see it, but I'm not sure.
He has frontage on a public right of way.
On a way.
But this is the way that you.
On a way, now you need to decide is that way adequate for you?
Is that way any worse than any of the road, of the road on, what's the one down by the pond there that we just didn't?
Heather Road.
Heather Road. Is that any less adequate than Heather Road?
As far as I can determine, this is never used for a right of way or anything.
So it's an A and R.
Because when you get down to Hazen, you gotta come follow this road and then come down.
I don't know, if I were the building inspector and it came, somebody submitted this as a plan, I'd say, sorry, go get frontage.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I would do is if I, if I were a building inspector, that's, they don't have frontage. And Morehouse could give him frontage just by.
Draw the line.
All the way up, yeah.
But he can't draw the line because there are two separate dated lots.
Yeah, yeah, how, how do you go across the street?
And.
I can't.
But it's, that's an abandoned street.
Ah.
It's abandoned, but it's still a public.
Is it abandoned? What was the date of abandonment in the vote for that?
Have you ever driven down it?
What was the date of the vote of abandonment by the select board?
Nobody knows.
Ah, it never happened, man. So it's not abandoned.
No, just, just because, just because nobody knows.
What happened? The county gave it over to the town.
I, I think this old Jewett Street thing has to be dealt with before, you know, Hazen Court and everything, that needs to be like decided by the attorneys or whoever's going to decide it. And this falls right in there with it.
Maybe we should send it to the board of selectmen to refer to town council for his opinion.
Yeah, spend more money.
Yeah, I think if, if they, if they just added a line here and just made that part of this lot.
But you can't make it part of.
Cannot do that.
Why?
Because it's a public right of way.
It isn't public.
It's a public right of way.
This is public, not this.
Yes, it is, Tilly, how is that not public now?
There's no way, you can drive it, where is the, you can't drive it.
It doesn't matter if it's, if, it could be a paper street.
Yeah.
It's still a public right of way. Doesn't matter if you can drive on it or not. If you think you can't drive on it, then to you, it's not an adequate way. And so then you could say, I don't approve A and R. But the adequacy of that way, in my opinion, is better than Heather Road, it's paved.
I think, Chris.
This is paved?
The wisdom of Solomon.
This is pavement right here.
The move for this is to send this off to town council.
I want to go look at this pavement, I don't remember being paved.
Rule on at this point.
Oh, it's not beyond what we can rule on.
This is paved.
I, I don't think that we will come to a consensus on it.
For everybody's, for everybody's benefit, I think if we got an opinion from town council, because they hate to do something that later is going to come back and bite Mr. Morehouse in the leg.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, um, just so, um.
We'd make a motion to continue.
Hearing this correctly, um, my understanding is at this point, if I'm hearing this correctly, there are questions about the adequacy of the way? Is that correct?
I think the questions the board are, are concerned about is.
Their frontage.
Is that considered frontage with that?
Is that a public right of way or not?
No, Howard, read our bylaw. You don't have to have frontage on a public right of way, you have to have frontage on a public way.
You have to have frontage on a way.
On a way.
Yeah.
Right? So. Right of way, a right of way and a way as defined in the bylaw are way different things.
Boy, I, I think, I think. One, a motor vehicle travels over, and one, a hiking group can go through. They're still public ways.
Correct.
I don't think we allow houses to use hiking trails as frontage.
Of course not.
Yeah, I think there's too much.
But that's what I would like town council to tell me, that that's appropriate frontage on an appropriate way.
I mean, at some point, you got to abandon, if that's a, a non-used right of way, or former Jewett Street, or however you want to refer to it, it's not Jewett Street anymore. No matter how you look at it, it's not Jewett Street anymore.
Yeah, why are they, why are they calling it old line Jewett Street?
Can I drive my car through there all day?
You can drive your car.
There's nothing you can do about it.
Yeah.
You've been on it?
Yeah.
Does he, you say, what do you think on it?
Well, he, he had a trailer stored on it.
May, may I?
In a public right of way.
May I call your attention, may I call your attention to the form A that was submitted?
And it's in your pack.
The trailer, I remember, was on here.
If, if I can call your attention to the, to the request, the form A, the form. The undersigned believes.
I didn't get it back, he's got it.
Oh.
Go ahead.
The undersigned believes that the approval is not required for a certain reason. And the, the division of the tract of land on the company plan is not a subdivision, because every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least such distance as is presently required by the zoning bylaw, which applies a hundred and sixty feet. And it's on a public way or way. Note the, the distinction there, which the town clerk certifies is maintained or used.
And used.
Or, and used as a public way, namely Jewett Street. So perhaps instead of having to go to town council, the first step, save a couple of bucks, would be to, um, bring this to the town clerk and find out if she would certify that this is maintained and used as a public way.
This Jewett Street, not this Jewett Street.
Oh, yes, absolutely, I mean.
It's not maintained.
She's going to have the same question.
What's that?
I, I think she's going to.
Oh, she's not going to know either?
Know either.
Well, somebody has to know or.
Well, how does this sound? How about we go to the town clerk, ask her if she will certify this as a, as a public way or is maintained as a public way? And in. And in the event that she does not, at that point, then send it off to Town Council. Right?
I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to be like, like impede Bob Morehouse from doing what he wants to do in a subdivision. I just don't wanna create more confusion than already exists there.
Well, you don't wanna create a legal dilemma.
And it would be very simple, just to abandon this old, this section of old Jewett Street. You don't have to abandon it all the way down to Hazen Court, but this section here.
Right.
This is sort of different than that Hazen Court.
I'd have no problem abandoning it if it was, came to town.
Abandon it, run those property lines all the way up to the real-
Water lines don't run beneath it or anything.
And then it's clean.
Right.
As long as there's no water line.
I don't wanna be part of passing on mess.
Right, and-
It's gotta be straightened out.
Who stole my-
Right, and, and perhaps-
Who stole my-
When Town Council looks at this, he can roll in his efforts also into saying he's in court and enjoy it and-
Right, we keep punting that.
It's all the same, it's all the same question, it's all the same answer.
Exactly.
What about asking Dirkie the same question?
Uh, well-
Yeah.
Dirkie isn't involved, it's the town clerk that needs to certify it.
Well, I can tell you Dirkie doesn't file that.
So that he doesn't have any problems down the line.
Well, wait a minute, he's attesting that it's a public way, which the town clerk certifies is maintained and used as a public way, namely Jewett Street. So where is the certification that he's-
Well, that's what he's saying, he's, he believes it is. And I, I believe that if paid the money, we should find out. He's, he's saying that he believes that the town clerk will certify it. And, uh, so, how about we have a motion to, uh, ask the town clerk to certify that the portion of Jewett Street shown on the plan-
Referred to as old Jewett Street.
Referred to.
Well, I guess it's not, it says Jewett Street.
How about, that circled.
Yeah, do that.
Do we have, do we have a highlighter? How about you have a highlighter?
Don't you, how about the one showing the, um-
What does E O P mean down there? What's this?
End of pavement. Uh, represented as a frontage. And in the event that the town clerk does not certify, then submit to Town Council.
How did you get on there?
Someone wanna make that motion?
You went on it.
Mr. Rich makes that motion.
Did you come down there?
I came up to Jewett Street, parked my car here.
Seconded by-
Walked over.
Tim?
You parked.
Discussion?
I parked right here.
I was just wondering how he got to it.
Is that cloud right now? Discussing, Tilly's got the discussion.
Don't know, I, I haven't been out there for probably three, three weeks.
I don't know how, poor Wendy does it, I really don't.
How do you follow along, girl?
Well, I know there's a driveway that goes to this house.
Yeah.
I thought maybe you went down that?
No.
Nope, went over here, I've never been on that. Back here, you must have got on, right?
Yeah.
I never knew that was the way to get there.
Yep, you can get in that way, sure.
For one thing, it usually has a pile of dirt there.
At, at any rate, there is a motion on the floor.
Different stuff, different times.
There is a motion on the floor, and the motion is to send this to the town clerk to see if she'll certify it. And if she will not certi- certify it, then to send this to Town Council.
It's been seconded, Mr. Chairman.
It has been seconded by Tim, all in favor.
More discussion.
Okay, we got a little more discussion, go ahead.
Well, Tilly was asking questions, I don't, you still have-
Oh, well, I just asked Howard how he got to it. And, and said he came down Jewett and then right here, he got on it, and I never knew you could do that.
Yeah, if you drive it.
Yeah, so, you know.
Well, you usually can't, cause there's usually a pile of wood chips or something in there.
That's what I remember, maybe-
Sometimes, on occasion, there's a, there's a tractor trailer there.
I know there was a driveway that came, and that must be to this house.
If it's a public way, then he, nobody should be blocking it.
Yeah, that's another, right.
How does that relate to the A and R?
Public way, you're saying?
Because the question brings into question, is that really a public way?
Well, the, I, I think-
So should it be?
I think the question is, do we want to send this to the town clerk for certification? And in the event that that certification is not received, send this to Town Council.
Yeah.
Would you like to discuss that?
No.
Would you like to discuss that?
It wouldn't hurt, but I would think that she'd say the same thing as she did to the other one.
Would you like to, I'm, I'm sure, we can't presume what she will or will not say, it's her job to do it. I'm willing to wait for her to do it, if, if the board wishes to make this motion.
I'm all for saving money, so if that's, if that's gonna solve it, but I-
Step one, right? So we have step one, we have step two, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Unanimously, four to zero. We know what we're gonna do with that, right Howard?
Yep.
Okay.
That's a beautiful thing.
Inspector Wendy, cause I think that's hers, there's a note on it. About Council.
Okay.
Thanks.
I got it.
I know, I'm good, but-
Tilly stole it from her.
Oh, Tilly wrote it.
Tilly stole it.
I wrote it, no, no, this is mine.
Okay, back to the agenda of the evening. A and R, that was, uh, we'll, uh, deal with that at the next meeting. Planning Office, Howard, um, Financial Committee update.
We couldn't meet with the Financial Committee due to the blizzard.
Oh.
It's been rescheduled for March night.
Finance Committee Advisory Board.
Oh, the Finance and Advisory Board.
Right.
Okay, it's not the Financial Committee. I, I didn't know if that was a new board. You're referring to the Finance and Advisory Board. Okay, okay, pre-construction meeting form has been updated.
Yep.
We knew that, right?
Well, you had requested to get a PDF of the update.
Cool.
That's been sent out.
So now we have that.
Damn account certificate of vote, went around earlier, you signed it.
Right, good. Open space and recreation plan, update.
You received a, um, copy of the executed contract, I believe.
So, just to announce that, the open space and recreation plan is going to be updated by, what is it, Brown Walker?
Brown Walker Planers. I'm contacting, uh, them to understand what their next steps are and when they're gonna start contacting all the, uh, boards and committees that need to be involved.
Fantastic, and that'll happen through the spring.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'd love to have one. Great idea. Ask them for a timeline?
Right. Uh, the timeline, I believe, is beginning of August.
Their timeline?
Yes.
They're, and they're benchmarked, they expect to do this by this, this by this, this by this.
Great idea, yeah.
How many, how many did you, uh, requests did you get to do it? How many?
Um-
You, you didn't go out to bid, I think, right?
The solicitation went to at least two.
Two?
Brown Walker, another one, I believe, Concom was, was doing that, so.
Oh, okay.
So, um, we'll be looking forward to that as we go through our spring, right? And a number of meetings.
Great.
Um, maybe we can get some kind of a rough timeline, as far as milestones, what to expect each and every month until August?
Yeah.
Where we'll be in the process? That would be, uh, that would be very helpful. And maybe we could, uh, write up an announcement, something to put in the paper?
Right.
Like a, um, press release. There you go, a press release. Sounds like a great idea, Howard. Great. Good with that, right? Next on the agenda, I, uh, I have a letter of correspondence here. Dated February twenty-six, two thousand thirteen. And it's probably not on the, uh-
It's not on the-
Not on the agenda. Obviously.
It was received today.
Yeah, this was just received today. Correspondence from, uh, the co-chairs of the School Building Committee. Take good notes. And does everybody have a copy of this?
Yeah.
I think it's in-
It was the only document in the supplemental packet.
Uh, and it basically says, Dear Howard, thank you for your letter dated February nineteen, two thousand thirteen, on behalf of a majority of the planning board. The Building Committee has always intended to share the site plans with the planning board. While we will not be filing a site plan application with the planning board, we still recognize the importance of feedback from them, the Building Committee is fortunate to have a covered member who also serves on the planning board. We're interested in hearing opinions from other planning board members as well. We look forward to sharing the perm book plans. D R A? Dra?
D R A, acronym, I don't know the names, but that's the Architectural, um-
Drummy something, drummy.
Oh, that, is that the engineer? The engineering outfit? The engineering outfit? Will be requesting a date to meet with the planning board soon. But they won't be filing a site plan?
Right.
So, how will they meet with us? I'm not understanding. Under what process?
And visit?
Oh, okay. Well, that's nice.
Mr. Chairman, just some-
Go ahead.
Technical stuff, and then we can discuss this. I would like a copy of this letter. Keep it. No, I wanted marked Exhibit A to be put in a file.
Oh, please.
Could we note that in the, um, in the record?
And I have one that we're discussing at the meeting that I will give to you that I've marked Exhibit A, which today's date, and I would like my fellow board members to-
Initial it?
Yeah, we can all initial it. But I also would like people to take note that this correspondence is dated yesterday.
Yes, it's dated February twenty-sixth, I said that.
And Tilly, you sit on that board, on that committee, right?
Yeah, I do.
Now, I let it went to them the day before their last meeting.
Yes.
Was it discussed at that meeting?
No.
And we're getting this response today, had there been any meetings in between that last meeting and today?
No.
Interesting.
Not with the committee.
Okay.
That's important, Wendy, that that get in the minutes, just the way I said it.
Yeah, this, this letter is, is signed by-
I'll get it off the table to make sure.
Ellie Sinkowitz and Michelle Smith, and it's signed as co-chairs of the School Building Committee. Note that it's not on letterhead, but I'm, I'm not aware of the School Building Committee having a letterhead. But it's, it's signed sincerely, Ellie Sinkowitz and Michelle Smith, co-chairs of the School Building Committee. So, did, did the board ever meet, the, the, the School Building Committee have a meet to vote on whether or not to have a site plan?
No, it has not been discussed.
Was there, I understood that-
Well, we have this now, and now it's, it's-
It's official from the chairs. From the last meeting, or will reflect from the last meeting, that they received the correspondence and that it was gonna be emailed to all of the members. Was it emailed to all the members and did they make a decision by email?
We know that they would never do that, that would be against the open meeting law.
No.
Thank you for telling me.
I would hope not. Uh, at any rate, um-
Mr. Chairman. I would move that we enter into executive session-
Oh, hold off one second on that, please. Um, are there, are there any other, before we make that, are there any other